And I'm, I'm very proud of the people how they dealing with our projects in Flint as we coming here to talk this stuff with Evelyn Lewis, oh wait, oh Dr. Lewis over there. I don't know where she coming from, but she looking down right now and Murphy fumbling up in his bag and stuff getting ready to run and break up the phone before we people in Flint get through talking about what's going on and...
Next speaker is Arthur Woodson.
Alright, Leon, I gotta say this out loud because you said it on, on video. I wasn't here when you voted on that tripod thing, so I wasn't the reason why you voted for it. Liddell, you gotta be one of the most... You say you have a PhD, but you can still be stupid as hell with a degree, and that's you. I never met a person, a female, that carry herself as a man and sit up here and get up in men's face and talk mess. You gonna cut that shit out for real. I'm serious. I wasn't talking to you when I was talking to Leon and you all up in my face talking shit, and I'm telling you right now, you gonna back the fuck down. I'm letting you know that right now, because I'm trying to give you and Candace the benefit of the doubt, man, and y'all still doing ignorant ass shit, man. And when people come up here and try to be cool and civilized, you two monsters keep on acting a fool, man. Leon, don't allow the audience to have you vote differently just because, you know, you wanna vote one way and you say that the audience made you vote another way, because that'd, that'd, that'd really mess up, because you could pass something that you shouldn't be passing, you know what I'm saying? I'm just saying, because Quincy said that one time before too, and, I mean, seriously, man.
I really think you should think about what you're doing. You want to have a lynching, an old-fashioned, southern lynching. It's appalling. It's disgusting. You put her name on here, the resolution, two times. You wanted to make sure you went after her. You printed it two times.
And thank you, ma'am, that's your time. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
You're so disrespectful.
The next speaker is, the next speaker is Beverly Biggs Levy.
My name is Beverly Biggs Levy. My name is Beverly Biggs Levy. It's a shame how you guys go after Billy. Like I said, Liddell raised up at three men's. Nobody reprimanded her. Eva went after Pfeiffer. Liddell went after Pfeiffer and Candy went after Pfeiffer. Y'all sat on both sides of him and harassed him all night, but nobody going after you. Nobody's taking your job from you, but you wanna take Billy's job for her for speaking up when she wasn't even the one that was talking. Now, if y'all think this is fair, it's a shame, 'cause Liddell gave Kennedy Center fifty thousand dollars to put me out of the ARPA fund money. He got fifty thousand, came back and got another twenty-five thousand just to get me out of the Kennedy Center. But if he knew like I do, he could've said, "Just sit down for a minute, sister. I'm trying to get this money." I wouldn't have had no problem. You have truly blessed me, blessed me, since you put him out. Truly blessed me. But see, but then you don't know the word of God, so I can understand that too. If you guys bid on Billy to be sat down, all of you need to be ashamed of this stuff.
Just really quickly, while I have forty-six seconds left, to point out the fact that we all have five minutes when it's time to talk and speak to agenda items, and when someone chooses to take three and a half of their five minutes to talk about everything but the agenda and then play victim, I can't help but wonder if they were ever taught accountability. I'm sure they were not, and it's clear as day. I think another thing that's interesting when we talk about political attacks is how my colleague in the sixth ward is so clearly meddling in the seventh ward race with what she trying to do tonight, but be clear, my residents know that I work for them and I work hard for them, so you can continue to meddle in the seventh ward, shoving seventh ward things, but more so I would encourage you, because I remember a few months ago you didn't own anything ARPA and you were holding up all the progress in the city, continue to speak to agenda items and actually progress the city. Thank you.
Alright, now, is it Mr. Murphy?
Yes. Yeah, I wanna respond to some of the speakers who brought up some of the work, the young lady with the rap on, the Muslim lady that talked about, I, I, I'm, excuse me, I, I don't know her name, but anyways, you, you talked about the blight around Dewey Park and what I'm not doing at Dewey Park. You don't ride around or whatever and see...
I didn't say that, sir.
Uh, please pause this time. Ma'am, it's not a back and forth.
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to clarify, I didn't say that.
But I listened to you, meeting after meeting, and you come up here and you try to, you know, you say what you wanna say, and, and then tonight, you said it in the name of Koran, but, uh, the young man that you said you saw me cutting grass and you wish one day that Quincy stand up for myself, I've been standing up for myself, what you don't know, you don't know me, so you think you know me, you only see what you see, and I had a conversation with you, you think I'm, don't have, that's your opinion, that's your interpretation of me, but you could best believe you or nobody else don't control Quincy, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost, uh, control me and nothing else. And then to the young lady in the back, the, uh, I, I heard somebody talk about, um, Liddell wanting to, um, get somebody fired, but yet it still, it was okay, 'cause we talked about double standards, it was okay for them to call my job at Lear to try to get me fired, but it didn't work.
That was me.
It didn't work. And then the young lady who says you party with me, you, I don't even know you from a candidate.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so, okay, thank you, you got it. Anyone else would like to speak? Alright, anyone like to speak? So, alright, so we will, I will take my time as the last speaker, and next I wanna be a, a clear on the hearing for Billy Dansler. This resolution is for a hearing for Ms. Dansler, so this is an opportunity for individuals and also for Ms. Dansler, if she wants to speak against the, um, the behavior that has went forth in these chambers, this is an opportunity for her to do so, because unfortunately, everything that she has been doing has been on tape, they have been mentioned to the accountability board, everything has been noted, so video does not lie. And, 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 and in addition to, when we have individuals threatening to beat your motherfucking ass, that's very unbecoming of someone a part of the accountability board, and it's unfortunate that a lot of my colleagues are refusing to bring that behavior to order, but it's okay, we will, and so that's exactly what this hearing is for. This hearing is to put everything out on the table, bring out the evidence, and to see if Ms. Dansler should retain her appointed seat. We saw that Mr. Earl had, Hall had a hard time based off of suspicious Facebook posts, and we have an EAB board member threatening people. So, thank you all so much, and we're now moving on to, we're on reconsiderations. So what's the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Priestley.
Um, I'd like to reconsider two points.
Alright, anyone else in the second round? Sina, no, go ahead and take my time. Mr. Jared, I, I kindly encourage you to reach out to Mr. Freeman, um, because I, I don't want you out here ignorant and, and not knowing the inner workings of the land bank, and, um, 'cause it's important, it's important to know, um, how they work and how they function so when you do, I mean, I, I don't see what's funny, 'cause, um...
Request for information.
Go ahead.
Request for information.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, did you just say you don't want him out here ignorant?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Not a problem.
Request for information.
Go ahead, Mr. Jared, what's your question?
Is there, is there something about my background that I don't know that would cause you to think that I'm ignorant, especially about land bank, when I have been in and around, well, thank you.
What, no, 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 let's be clear, ignorant doesn't mean stupid at all, ignorant just means that you don't know.
I understand, but be careful with your selection of and referring to your colleagues.
Again, I didn't say it in an offensive tone, in an offensive manner, but, oh, okay, well, again, my apologies again, 'cause that's what you do when you grown and when somebody be offended and you didn't mean to do something, that's what you said. So, what I was saying was, we need to have a conversation with Mr. Freeman so you can see how they operate, because everything is based off of assumption, because...
You don't know what I know, you don't have to show me how to conversation. I feel the land bank...
Um, but, sir, you're out of order, it's, it's my turn to speak.
I understand that.
Okay, well, understand that's your warning, let's not do this.
I feel the ruling of the chair. Yes, I do, because that, I do, I have to.
Go ahead.
At, after a second.
Is there a second? Go ahead, what's your...
Number one, when you speak to someone's motive, rule forty-three point twenty-one, and then you insert an insult. Ignorant is not ever going to be received as a compliment, it's just not. You don't know his, his knowledge of the land bank, his workings with the land bank, you don't know, you made an assumption, and then you came back and you, you doubled down. You can't do that. You have to have, you want us to give you respect, you have to give it to your colleagues in addition. Ignorant is never going to be a compliment, and you said it and you doubled down, and then you went to tell him what his knowledge is, that's not what you should be doing. It was perceived as an insult, but he wanted to defend himself, he wanted to, you gave him a warning, and of course he's gonna be upset. I mean, you, you referred to him and his lack of knowledge, it's being ignorant. We, we, we can't do that, and then when he defends himself, you would like to give him a warning. You are out of order with rule forty-three point twenty-one.
So, as stated before, um, this is about why Mr. Jared received a warning, Mr. Jared received a warning 'cause he did not have the floor, and he will not cease talking, and that's just what happened. Now, we already discussed, apologized, and moved on for clarity, and, and that was that. When I refer to that phrase, we're talking about, we're talking about what we just stated, and so if certain knowledge was there, then that wouldn't be, uh, an issue, 'cause we have understanding how they function with the land bank. But I'm done, Ms. Lee, so, um, we're gonna move on, appealing, um, the ruling of the chair, yes, overturns, no, vote for, go ahead. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jared.
I abstain, because we all saw what happened, and we know that I was far from out of order with the way that these meetings are ran otherwise.
Mr. Alami?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle? The rule of six yes, one no, one abstention?
Six yes, one no, one abstention, the ruling of the chair is overturned. So now we are...
That I'm not comfortable with doing this, but I do understand that you, Attorney Kim, Madam Chair, whether we approve this or not, it's going to go into effect, is that correct?
Uh, not quite. Uh, if we don't approve the, or if this council doesn't approve the ACO, uh, Eagle would have the authority to impose an order, it may or may not be what is in the ACO, they could, there are, they, they, they aren't limited to only imposing the ACO, they, they could impose more stringent or, uh, you know, harsher terms than what we, what we negotiated with them.
So it could be more stringent rules?
Yes, it could be, it's, 'cause, 'cause, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's up to them, it's, but it's, it'll be their discretion to do so.
So the ACO was a pretty lengthy report. It was what, a hundred and sixty-something pages?
Uh, at this point, I couldn't check, it, it was long, I'll just say that.
Well, it looks like we got to lose the court, anyway. So when, if we don't, if we don't pass this tonight, how soon are we looking at the state maybe imposing?
Um, I can say that the latest deadline that they gave us was the end of this month.
And we won't be in session?
Yeah, well, one of my staff did request, uh, an additional extension, but we've gotten no response from, from the...
When was that put in to get an extension?
Last week sometime, but I've dealt with personally, so...
Okay, so, we have got a serious issue, 'cause the ACO is really important.
I'd say that approving the ACO as it is, it may not be the perfect document, but, um, it was one that we negotiated with and that they, we expressed concerns about, you know, the practicality of timelines and, and such.
Uh, this meeting is officially adjourned.
I object.
For lack of court. You have good evening.
So the president and the vice president...
These are the tricks they play, these are the games they play. Look at our president leaving, look at our vice president leaving.
No, this is, no, this is what's so...
And you know, and, and I want the community to understand why they leaving.
They're leaving. They're going on vacation. City business is not done and they going on vacation.
Right, right.
Wow.
Right, we had that resolution coming up for, uh, Ms. Billy.
Dansler, wow, just a piece of work.
They didn't have their five votes.
Wow, disgraceful, disgraceful, totally disgraceful. We got a bill of emergency to consider, and they walk out, they walk out... They want to talk about behaviors of the county. They walk out of the city business.
They walk out, believe it or not.
I'm gonna let y'all hang y'all hat on devilishness, being devilish, voting against the rules, the written rules, lying, I'm gonna let y'all hang y'all hat on that, 'cause I done lived to be sixty-four years old and I ain't never seen a lie outwalk the truth. Ain't seen it yet, might last for a minute, but it don't last long. This Hurstman wrote, "I never knew you were so deceitful and dishonest." I'm gonna be voting yes to reverse your ruling that you gave him the floor, that he made that motion that you trying to put in his mouth. That's ridiculous. You heard me ask for the floor, you heard him ask for the floor, you could've gave it to him, but don't get an inkling what he been to do to keep us from having a discussion and say you did what you didn't do. Ms. Burns sitting right there by you.
Mr. Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, um, I did try to get the floor, because I'm trying to be quick on my feet when it comes down to me wanting to call for the question, 'cause we already had a discussion about this, right, already, so I wanted to hurry up and call for the question, 'cause my colleague in the first ward loves to hurry up and grab the floor, so when he tried to grab the floor, um, he'll try to go and be like, "Hey, hey," and then get to grab the floor without you even acknowledging him being, um, a knowledge, and then he'll just grab the floor and run.
Request for information.
What's your request?
Do I say, or do I say, Madam Chair?
That's an improper point, proceed.
Thank you so much, um, as I make, finish continuing my thought, um, he'll grab, he'll try to grab the floor real quick, so I said, "Let me try to grab the floor real quick," so I could be quick on my feet, just like he tried to be quick on his feet, so I could call, um, for the question, because we done discussed it. My attempt was to call for the question, what you acknowledged when I tried to hurry up and grab the floor, 'cause I know what he doing, so I gotta beat him to the punch to call for the question in order to, um, have us vote on, do we wanna postpone this? We already know what we wanna do, we wanna discuss this later. Uh, my colleague, uh, put a motion on the floor to postpone this until we get to the, uh, approval of the budget, so I hurried up and tried to get the floor to call for the question, he hurried up and tried to get the floor, but I was quicker than him, so you acknowledged me first, so when you heard that I called for the question, then you, um, went on and acknowledged me first, you could acknowledge him, but you acknowledged me, 'cause I was trying to call for the question, I already know what he trying to do. So, I hurried up and tried to beat him to the punch to call for the question, so that we could vote, do we wanna continue to discuss this, 'cause had I not called for the question, we'd have been into a, um, discussion, and we got a lot of other agenda stuff that we trying to get done, and some of us is trying to...
What's your request?
Did you call for the question before she acknowledged you?
That's an improper point, proceed.
Thank you so much, so, um, like, my colleague liked to use the point, uh, request for information as a point in order to gain the floor, to take the floor to whatever, but anyways, my attempt was to, um, um, gain the floor prior to my colleagues hurrying up trying to gain the floor, 'cause you know, he'll speak and then he, he won't even allow you to acknowledge him first, he'll speak and just get to running off, he don't even wait, that's just, he, 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 he roll like that, so he'll just grab, um, get to speaking, he don't wait for nobody to acknowledge him first, he'll get the floor and just get to running with it, so I hurried up and tried to get the floor before him, so because I was quicker than him, now he got a problem with it, and then I called for the question, so we could vote on this, so that we can move on, 'cause some of us wanna get the business of the city of Flint done, and we ain't interested in, um, leaving and breaking court, we wanna come here and get the business done and move on, so we can go home and take care of the business of the city of Flint. We was supposed to pass this budget on Monday, we came to this special meeting to pass the budget, and that's what I'm here to do. So I called for the question, so we can vote and keep on moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, any other discussion in the appeal?
No, Chair, go ahead.
But the facts are the facts, the truth is the truth, and I'll be voting yes again, regardless of what the shady bunch do.
Um, point of order.
What's your point?
My colleague is calling us shady bunch, and all of us are identity officials, and I, um, I take offense of any of us being called shady bunch. We are councilmen in the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, where we have names and we got a title in front of us.
Point well taken, Mr. Mays, please keep your comments respectful toward your colleagues.
Let me say this, I think Santos out of New York is shady, I think he's lying, and I think y'all them broke rules and y'all are shady. I will use adjectives to describe to this public how you're voting, I will use adjectives to describe how you constitutional violation of law. Now, he done interrupted me, because I know for a fact that y'all is voting shady, if it relates to Congress. My job is to do the work and serve these people of the city of Flint and keep politicians off my back.
Thank you, Ms. Chief Green, I appreciate your presentation.
Why you didn't thank me or just cut me off? That two minutes, y'all didn't start the fifteen minutes late, Ms. Priestley, you're being rude.
Thank you, Chief Green.
You, uh, let me say this, you're being rude. Now, I can be rude too, Mr. Green wasn't talking, I was, but what you just did was a slick move, that like y'all say, y'all was scared of them people the other night. You was scared of the people and put it in the newspaper? Oh, no. Three white women left out telling them they scared of the people? Don't you ever try to be slick with me, you could say, "Mr. Mays, are you done? You started fifteen, twenty minutes late, I'm one minute over, and you talking about, "Thank you, Chief Green." Cut that crap. I'm just... Moving with somebody got some sense.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Ain't that crazy and rude and evil and nasty?
Can I make a one of y'all?
Just nasty.
Yeah?
I, I did not get to all my questions, and so...
About fifteen, twenty minutes late.
I know I need that from you.
Ain't got no questions.
So, that way I...
Going through something, I'm through that, in this project, I was the man, you and him ain't the man. Y'all looking, I guess, at that court case, think that my voice gonna get whispered instead. Y'all racist, discriminatory, and I'm gonna lead this meeting and gonna talk about you to the cows.
What's your point, Mr. Murphy? Mr. Mays, you are out of order, Mr. Murphy, what is your point?
Uh, my colleague is...
You are out of order, what's your point?
I had the floor, you out of order.
There was a point of order called, "You are out of order," Mr. Murphy, what's your point?
My point of order is him talking about discrimination.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you. Alright, Mr. Murphy?
Thank you.
Alright, is there any other discussion?
Second ward, I think I got the right, uh, Dr. Lewis, uh, is you responsible for everybody in, in McDonald's, every time I go there in the morning time, they ask me about how the council doing, but when I start talking, they be saying, "Give them decaf, don't get them regular coffee no more." And now, every morning, I don't want to visit them in the decaf and regular coffee, talk about mental health, and then he talks about, "Do you take your medicine in this?" Are you responsible for that? That what you talking about, you all this? I want you to respond to me about that situation, because it's getting out of hand, that area. Even got the donut people went out of business the, the, the day, because, because I think you did have something dealing to do with that.
Everyone else in the army, the F-word must've been twenty times he did that. Dr. Lewis escorted, had him escorted out of here, and I applaud him, he called me an asshole. He don't have the right to talk to me like that or anybody else, you know, sir? These people here to do a job. He got rid of one of the best councilmen.
We worked together, 'cause at the end of the night, we five votes.
Point of information, Council Murphy...
And you can have the floor, I ain't finna keep...
Point, no, excuse me, sir, I just received this when I walked into council chambers. I just received it, and I shared it immediately, did you know I just received it when I walked into council chambers, and did you know I spoke with Mr. Michael Downs about that? House of Esther doesn't need the school, so that can still be worked out, Councilman Murphy. He called me, I spoke with him a couple of times. Are you, do you still need the floor?
No, 'cause I don't wanna be getting cut off, you gonna have it.
I, I, Councilwoman Priestley, you have the floor.
I think, um, really, for you to ask him if he's returning is, is really not necessary, I mean, because he's just asking to be excused. Before, when he was excused, he took his folder with him, so, I mean, I noticed that, so I'm sure he's coming back. He really doesn't have to say he's coming back or not, because that's never a question that has ever been asked, if anyone, um, asks to be excused. I'm just saying, thank you.
Point well taken, Dr. Lewis, in regards to the point of order that was called by you, point also well taken. Mr. Mays, you did call a point of order in there.
Point of information, am I excused?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy, you had the floor.
Thank you. This is really getting ridiculous, this man, I'm sitting over here, sitting here, this man is keep on nickpicking with Dr. Lewis, and some of my colleagues over there ain't hearing it, but I'm hearing it in my ears.
Mr. Murphy, decorum, please.
And what I'm telling you guys is, this man is literally over here picking with Dr. Lewis, so if y'all don't hear it, y'all need, I'm letting y'all know that this man is over here picking with Dr. Lewis, and she ain't saying nothing to him...
Mr. Murphy, decorum, please. Decorum means treating... Decorum means treating all of our colleagues with respect.
I'm telling this council, and y'all can mock my words, y'all need to put this man in check. He is over here disrespecting this lady, ma- making sidebar conversations, and I'm sitting up here hearing it all the way from my seat. And then, she trying to be, keep her composure as much as...
Point of information.
What's your...
Through you to the speaker, did you grow up lying your whole life?
Mr. Mays, that is an improper point.
May I be excused again?
Yes. Mr. Murphy?
Um, did he grow up with some mental issues his whole life?
Mr. Murphy, decorum.
For real. I'm ta-, I'm, I'm, listen. Whoever chairing these meetings, I'm just letting y'all know. Y'all need to get this dude, because I'm not scared of him. Whether he want to recall me or not, that's on him.
Mr. Murphy, decorum.
Y'all want to talk about decorum with me, but y'all don't want to check this dude about his decorum. This man been out of order all meeting, all meeting, and y'all will not check him. Check him and get him up out of here. I'm not about to let this man be talking to me any kind of way. He could talk to y'all any kind of way, but he ain't gonna be talking to me no, any kind of way. And he ain't gonna be disrespecting Dr. Lewis over here, and she ain't saying nothing. Why ain't nobody stopping him? Why everybody think he ought to be able to get up and leave? This dude get up and leave more than any council person that I've seen in here, and it's out of order and it's disrespectful.
Thank you. Is there any other, what's your point?
Is there a reason why Dr. Lewis has not stated that she was, she's had things stated to her and has remained silent? Because we can't hear from over here.
Dr. Lewis, if you care to respond to that point of information.
Absolutely, I do. So you know, and keeping in mind...
Point of order. I thought we was on a motion. And I done heard people say germane or whatever. If I'm the subject of this motion, then so be it. I'll come back, respond to the motion that y'all ain't talking about, and then I'll proceed to still be excused.
Mr. Mays, this is a, Mr. Mays...
So, point of order, are we on a motion? And is this germane to the motion?
Mr. Mays. Councilwoman Burns called a point of information, which is in order. Dr. Lewis is answering that point of information. We are still in the first round of discussion. Doc-, Dr. Lewis will answer the point of information, and then I will call for the next member of council who wishes to speak in the first round. Dr. Lewis.
Okay, so, I've been trying to maintain this by calling the, calling out the point of order and, and et cetera, by having him removed. He's been saying things, and again, keeping in mind that I was elected to be a professional council person. I don't go back and forth. I sat back, I rubbed my hands. They were a little cold. And he's telling me, "What you say? What you say? Beg your pardon." At the end, that's when he interrupted the meeting and called a point of order. Me, as a...
Point of information.
What's your point?
Ms. Lewis, is you gonna try to convince me and God you didn't say nothing to me?
Through you, Madam Chair, what did I say?
I don't know, but it were toward me, and you were rubbing your hands, and you said it. Now convince me and God. Are you willing to try to do that?
That's an improper point of information. Dr. Lewis, you may continue to answer, uh, Ms. Burns' question.
But this is an ongoing issue, and...
Point of information.
What's your point?
I've been loudly on the microphone disrespecting Mr. Murphy, and you couldn't hear that?
Um, well, of course...
That's an improper point of information. Dr. Lewis, continue.
And thank you, Madam Chair. And pursuant to the council rules, I can pull it up. Yet, you're not supposed to talk vulgar or make attacks or talk disrespectfully to your colleagues. So since he's self-admitting that, that shows that he, his behavior is out of order.
If she still talking, she out of order. Give her one. Do she know that everything I've said about Mr. Murphy been loud and proud?
Dr. Lewis, continue.
So, as previously stated, using point of information to, to grab the floor, violation of council rules. He just admitted that he was out of order by verbally attacking the council person in the third ward, which also, according to council rules, is out of order again. So that's two out of order things that he have participated in, and I was just self-admittedly. When are we just gonna stop kicking the can down the road?
What's your point of information?
Is one of the two out of orders him attacking me? Me, him? Two? One, two? Is that what you referring to? Two out of order?
That is an improper point of information. Dr. Lewis, are you finished?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm done, so hopefully he'll be done, so we can be done.
Thank you. Um, that answered the point of information raised by our colleague in the sixth.
Point of information, Madam Chair.
What's your point?
Are you gonna sit and allow this man to talk all that tough talk, talking about what, what he ain't scared, won't act, uh, 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 and you sit there and condone it? May I be excused again? And if it, if it continue, I'll come back. We on a point of order.
There is a point of...
Point of order.
There was a point of information called the point of order. What is your point of information?
He is not being respectful to his fellow council people.
Point of order.
That was an incorrect point of information.
It was, it was incorrect.
I thought you said point of information.
And my point of order is...
That is sustained. What is your point of order?
My point of order is warn them. My point of order is that if he make a personal attack toward me, I'm gonna make three back, even if I get arrested. You can't tolerate him talking a certain way. I ain't starting it.
Mr. Mays, this is your second warning.
Yeah, may I, may I be excused on this second warning? This supposed, my point of order is supposed to be on a motion, and it done turned to me every time he talk is me. And I'm getting tired of it. And, and I'm Quincy Murphy, and I just think I'm steady here, and I ain't starting, I ain't starting you.
Mr. Mays, you are entirely out of order.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't win, oh boy, because you are discriminatory.
That is incredibly...
You got little ears that hear what you want to hear, and I ain't starting you.
Metcalf.
I ain't starting you.
Mr. Mays, you will not be allowed back in this meeting.
You ain't got to tolerate. I tolerate you. I ain't starting you. Now, put that in your low...
Okay, we are still in the first round of discussion. Is there any other member of council who wishes to speak in this first round of discussion? Yes, Dr. Lewis. Mr. Mays, you've been excused. Dr. Lewis, you have the floor.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Dr. Lewis, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I would like to make a motion to remove Eric Mays from his seat for thirty days.
There is a motion on the floor to remove Eric Mays from his seat for thirty days. Is there support?
Um, I support.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Madam Chair, may I amend that?